That would be, it would be ending December.
There'd be three supervisor positions open next year.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
For the next, you mean this year?
No, yeah, for this year, correct.
Maybe I could just calculate at the month, just say for like fifteen months or whatever.
Done.
No.
December thirty first seventeen.
They go into next year. Yeah, it'd be the end of next year, so it'd be seventeen.
Yeah, December thirty first twenty seventeen.
Twenty-three months.
Or would it go to the election?
It would go to the election.
Of the year, twenty seventeen.
What, uh, the term would go to December thirty first, actually it would be January, whatever it is that from twenty eighteen until the, until the next elected official is put in that.
Okay, so if you put the time, I'm just thinking if you put the time, maybe we might have more applicants because six-year terms are long-term, but maybe just that little.
Right here, two years.
I'm confusing. So, this person we appoint as the fit board member will serve until the end of two thousand seventeen.
Until the reorg of twenty eight.
Until the re, yeah, that's, that's most accurate, until the reorg of twenty.
So next year, so that there'll be my seat, Ed's seat, and that Chuck's seat will all be open.
And that, and that seat will be open for two years.
For two years and then two six-year terms for Ed's seat.
Right, two six-years and a two-year, right.
Do you want me to post workshop?
Yeah, they would like the interview.
To have, yeah, that they would need to be able to come in on February, whatever it is.
And they've got to be an elector of the township who's lived here for more than a year.
Yeah, so they get all that information on there. Just do a little write-up for something. Yeah, name, resume. Yeah, and that they're willing to come to the workshop meeting and have a public interview.
And attend board meetings.
And attend board. All right, uh, public participation.
Yeah, first of all, Steve, I'd like to thank you for the way the meeting was conducted, it's a lot different from the last two meetings, so thank the board for the civil. And also, I would make a comment in reference to Pam, I, thank you Pam, when I gave, well, after Martin, in reference to the historical mission and planning commission, I asked her to get all the phone numbers for all the numbers. Cause just like this gentleman stood up here tonight, you're talking about applications for supervisor, there's senior citizens in this township that could be on the board there. And they don't have email, Facebook, and stuff like that, so we used to do a township letter. Evidently, somebody did a good job with the post letter, either somebody in the back or somebody from here, but evidently the postcards got out to certain people tonight, all right? So maybe those people that sent the postcards out there will send them out to some of the senior citizens to, would love to be, some of them are CEOs, experts in banking, expert in economy. Some of them are retired lawyers, would be great to be set up on that board and have the time. I would like this board, I know we cut it out of the budget, but the township manager definitely is needed in this township. We have, like you said before, we have a changeover with secretaries and treasurers, we had new people in here, and they're going through the learning stage. I'll tell you right now, and you gentlemen talking about change, West Vinson Township changed everybody, planning commission, solicitors, historical, they did a sweep. Too bad Mr. Hook is not here tonight, but he made changes when he came in, he got rid of two district attorneys, and I'm not gonna mention their name, but they were district attorneys for twenty-five years. So he had the right to bring in the lawyer, so he got, you have, I'll just say, the board, we elected you to make those decisions. You know, the communication should be before different departments, but those departments don't make the decisions, all right? The board, the five up here, are now the vacancy chair, all right, will make those decisions, and that's what we elected you for, all right, to make the decision. I will say in reference to solicitors, I can, you know, I hear people saying they've been here so many years, yeah, I know Bill Keen, a resident township, he was a township solicitor for years, he only charges forty dollars. That's when Earl Dillon and me were supervising, and then the partner gentleman that you were with was the next one. So, and then after that, uh, Lamb's Farm, so we do change lawyers, all right? And I've seen the resumes before, where it came with engineers, and it came with lawyers, they all come in, Joe voted on it, and all of a sudden, one farm dropped, charging two hundred dollars, and all of a sudden, they found out that the other farm was doing five dollars less, they dropped theirs down. So then you appointed them again, but the thing is, it's not so much what they charge an hour, it's the telephone calls that they get from residents and stuff, and that's one thing has to stop with any solicitor, all right? Cause when I call them, that, that costs money, when you call your farm, that means your solicitors on there, so it costs money. And the township should also, you got the chairman, you've got a vice chair, I'm sure you can get ahold of one or two of them, and they can contact with any of you guys in there. All these telephone calls, I've seen the budget before, and the telephone calls that were going to the solicitor, and the amount of money they cost, and it's, it's a lot of money. And that's why we wanna cut costs, and that's what I'm asking you, and again, thanks Steve and Kyle and Ed, Joe, and, uh, my thoughts are going with Charles, his health reasons, and, uh, I'm glad to have you on board, thank you.
George, at this point, you know that, you said you know that God from the daily local?
Yes.
Would you wanna contact them, see if they might want us on the paper?
Yeah, we would, but although Potty shared with me today, I guess he is no longer covering East Fallfield, now it's gonna be Lucas Rogers.
Right here.
Uh, yeah, right here.
Oh, sorry.
I've never met you before, Lucas.
Hey, good to meet you.
What do you think, Lucas could just put us on the paper?
Yeah, 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 I was definitely covering, uh, school board resigning. I, uh, I cover the Coatsville area, the reason I don't come to these meetings normally is cause they're the same way as the school board and South Coatsville, so I don't know for sure if I'm gonna, I'm gonna be here consistently, but, uh,
We're not interhaining.
David got canceled tonight, so.
Well, so you talk, how about, how about coastal budget, does this one go up or what?
Any other, uh, public participation at this point? Just, Mr. Zentin, if you can come over here, and then you.
In so much as, uh, my volunteer efforts were rebuffed, I request that, because I have personal information on resumes, that I get all those copies back.
What about that?
Yeah, for me? My hands, I, I'm gonna have my shredded, mine has print on it, except that I can't give my back, so I wrote stuff on here.
That's all right.
Cause I'm all, have it shredded?
No, I'll have it right now. No?
I'm not gonna turn that over to you, cause I have, I wrote notes on here, so.
Please give the solicitor, have him.
I'll have this shredded.
No, sir.
Yeah, I'll shred it, I'll have it shredded.
No.
I'll have it shredded, yeah, I will, Mr. Zentin, I'll have it shredded, when I go in the office, I'll have it shredded.
Uh, Steve, you can walk with me?
Yeah.
Okay, Steve, I'll shred it.
Can I still have it also? Steve, is you?
Not to the back, I'll make sure.
I'll have it shredded, good.
I think one of the things, anytime you take a, go to the public office, and you aren't at the center of attention, and you like, if you have any threats and stuff like that, you should address that personally with the police department, and, and that be handled through there, that didn't need to come out of the public forum in this place, and I'll say that. If you're having a personal issue with being threatened, you shouldn't bring it out even more than what you did, you should've just let Chris handle that and done with it. But I will say this, is anytime anybody steps, says Mike, they need to come forward with a solution, okay? I've now listened to a couple residents go up here and just attack and banter, and you know what, that doesn't get us anywhere. To talk about certain situations in other townships, that's fine, but that's not this township, and it's not here tonight. What creative funding sources have you guys gone after or thought about to address the fire department's shortfalls, uh, and all their areas, such as, uh, how many residents do we have paying trash bills in this, in the township, like how many residents pay trash bills?
Sure.
Two thousand seven hundred and seventy.
Okay.
And my idea for the, the, you know, reading piece stats as far as the fire department is the easiest thing to do, and a lot of, um, municipality councils and, and township boards are doing, is giving it to the residents to decide on. I would like to see the residents decide on a fire tax this year, which the board will submit and have on the ballot in the general election, and that allows the residents to determine, you know, through their voting, whether or not they would like to increase, you know, the funding to the fire department, and if it is, if it is voted through, then that's the people have spoken on that. And that's, um, if it gets voted down, then that's the other way the people feel that their certain level of service might be at a certain level, but that's the fairest thing I can think to do, and I've read that from other municipalities in Pennsylvania, that's what boards are doing, they're saying, hand it over to the people, I would be totally in favor, have that on the, the ballot for you to vote on, and everyone else.
And that's, and that's, you know, I applaud that, um, the other thing is, is Carol, you had said you're running on the budget, you ran on the budget, you ran on the budget, well, obviously, you didn't know enough about the budget, because talking about with Chris and the full-timer and putting it out, and the part-timer and this and that, you're like, do you have any idea what it costs to hire a police officer in the township? It's a yes or no question, man. It's a, it's.
What the?
What the actual cost is to hire a new hire today?
I'm thinking, what they get paid for the year.
No, 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 what it costs to hire an employee, you know, so the best way that we've run our police department for many years is that we have a part-time staff that we pull from, because they're already in uniforms, they're already certified, they've already been drug tested, they've already been trained, so that way, it's a smooth transition. If there's a full-time spot, it shouldn't work like this, there's a full-time spot open, Chris should've came in and said, here's my pool of part-timers, this is who I wanna hire, boom, fill the full-time spot, it's a budget situation, yes. The other thing is, I would address that the board challenges every department in this township to see where they can save money, it's a simple thing, it, it really is. It's, uh, some hard lines have to be taken, but have your department heads come back with some, some ideas first before that, and maybe some of that transition, uh, would've helped, you know, coming into the meeting and say, hey, look, the roads department said, hey, if we did this, we can save that, uh, and show us a real cost there. Now, as towards, and I'll address your issue when you're talking about the public has to be, the, the hiring has to be thing, well, they just turned to the lawyer and gave you the answer, and then you came back and said, no, it wasn't that.
It's a resolution, sir, that the board of supervisors made a resolution.
He addressed it.
But, you know, at the end of the day, at the end of the day though, buddy, the board addressed the lawyer, the lawyer gave him the information, it was done.
The lawyer don't know about the resolution that the supervisor, you go by the, you go by the resolution.
Any other public comments?
Resolutions tonight, Paul.
Hi. Stop.
You gotta know a little bit about the township, there's a resolution. You don't know nothing about the township.
I would first like to say that in reading, uh, East Fallfield Township, Chester County, PA, rules for conduct of public meetings, number one, the chairman, the vice chairman shall control the order of the business and conduct of the meeting. That did not happen at the last meeting, so you boys caused the chaos and the confusion and all that resulted. Number six, tonight, the gentleman right before me is not following the rules, and chairman, you are not requiring him to do so, number six reads, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question the board of supervisor members or township staff. Could you please follow that? I would also ask the board of supervisor, chairman, and I want an answer, when developer, any type of applicant comes before the planning commission, there should be a folder started, and all that paperwork put in there. And I do hope, because I know I discussed this way back, on the inside of the folder, should be a checklist, and you check it off, what it, what the requirements are, like A, B, C, D, and there could be sections within those check-offs. Applications, meetings, timeline, blah, blah, and so forth, maybe you have that in your planning commission, I don't know, I, uh, maybe I'll come and get a right-to-know and request, so we can copy it and have it here, if we don't, I don't want a, a law firm to have to administratively tell you how to run the township. We've had a planning commission since, uh, life began, so is that the case, chairman? Does the planning commission have a file that has check-off list and dates, et cetera, so that if I come here and ask for the blah, blah, file, that will be, everything will be recorded, so there would be no question, it better be. Well, is it?
I would defer to the planning commission as far as what their procedures are for setting up the folders, and they'll certainly have all that information, whatever's right-to-know, you can gladly request for.
Okay, well, you know, I don't want a whole bunch of legal money spent on it, and I also want the records to reflect that, uh, Mr. Cook has a personal, uh, possibly conflict of interest in reference to the blah, blah property. So that's another thing, and here, so now we'll jump onto that, but, so I'm not gonna get an answer on that, because you don't know, that the file folders in reference to a planning commission application.
I don't go through the planning commission applications on a day-to-day basis, so I can't.
No, I don't mean membership, I mean, somebody, let's say for the blah, blah people, or the developer, I'm not talking about applicants for a planning commission job, I'm talking about developers, et cetera.
I'm sure there's a file for them to go through and have everything, but I can't tell you exactly what the contents are, if you want a right-to-know, you can gladly.
Well, I might go look at them, but there should be administratively correct check-offs, so we know where we stand, we don't talk about it every month, okay? I would also state to this board, that I notice, and I've noticed through the years, and I noticed through all the municipalities, there is a overall strategic advisor, and what that process is, you stack the deck with what you want to happen. You put the right people in, therefore you stack the deck, um, you filibuster, and you sabotage, that's what I've noticed going on.
No, no personal attacks or claims of anything.
I did not personally attack anyone, I'm giving you a procedure that I see happening, so there we go with that. I would not want the township to sell any land, now, if somebody wants to buy anything in Newland Township, it's very small little properties, go for it, but I wouldn't wanna spend a lot of money to do it. And I think any open space that we have, hold on to it, because it's apparent to me that, again, there is the drive, the overall strategic advice to develop every blade of grass you can, thank you.
I, I just wanna say, I think, uh, tonight especially, as chairman and vice chairman, Steve, and I think you guys did a great job of controlling the meeting.
Thank you, Joe.
Certainly compared to some of the recent meetings we had.
And I'd, I'd gladly take blame for the last one, that was my fault, so.
Well, it was your first meeting too, as chair, and things got out of hand, and I think, uh, I think you consider the circumstance, I think you did a tremendous job in the last meeting too.
And I've been very in the spot to move forward, so.
Yes, uh, real quick, one thing I wanted to bring out, and actually Carol pointed this out, is we did have a woman who applied for Park and Rec, who was interested in Park and Rec, which we got the email back in December, and we do have it packaged tonight, but I think we inadvertently may have missed it. First of all, I'm sorry, from the meeting, yeah, um, is it possible to, Angela Johnson, is her name, she's not here, it's my own belief.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, that's one, uh, that's.
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm thinking maybe we, if one of us can reach out to her and ask her to come to the next work session, if, I mean, it'd be a, obviously Park and Rec, one, but maybe that's where it starts.
Yeah, maybe she can have other people that she knows to.
I actually just recently got another one that I'll forward to you guys.
Okay, great, okay. Fantastic.
Uh, you know, when they come in and ask them, then if they can come to the next workshop, if they're comfortable with you. Can you come up, please?
Well, it's, it's real quick, what kinda like qualifications do you need for that, I mean, you're asking for resumes and stuff.
Which one?
For like Parks and Rec, like I'm an IT guy, I don't do outdoors that much, but.
You're on.
Congratulations.
Steve's on IT. We need a volunteer. You're in, what's your name?
I don't think there's a, yeah, I don't think there's a set, nice, uh, requirements, but, you know, generally, wanting to help with the parks and rec, and a lot of it's working with, with grants and trying to improve the park and the open spaces, and working with TDP and ETPA and all that kinda stuff, so there's some of that, and there's not a specific set of requirements, uh, like some auto boards, but, uh, if anyone that's interested in helping out. Okay, all right, now, you know, what's neat is, um, if I can, just respond to you, what's kinda neat right now is that the park is really far from being completed, so there's, it's a great time to come in and, and have some vision for how you would like to go, there is a master plan, but even the previous Park and Rec board said that they would be interested in revising that, that plan, I mean, it's technically to be a skateboard park, and there's a lot of things to come. But, you know, as, as a person going on there, if you see a different vision, or something that you would like to, you know, you feel that should come more forward, it's a perfect time that you can have a great stamp on developing that, that park, and, and bring it out further, you know, taking, picking up the ball from where they, they stopped.
Tanga's requested, real quick, if you have a gray jeep that's parked in front of one of the days, we do need you to leave, please, so if you have a gray jeep, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Close, you're under hand, go next, and then you, sir, go next.
Okay. One of those ones gonna seem out of left field, uh, some of the people that have problems with, uh, older people, senior citizens, disabled people and things like this, uh, went over to the county to see about, uh, and I'm not gonna use the right word this time, uh, making an exclusion for people that are very low income, maybe losing their home or something like that. If we can put any type of, uh, an exclusion together, like the, the Homestead and Farmstead Act, it's an exclusion, uh, having to have certain requirements, age, disability, uh, income, things like that, if we can make something like that, that'll help out some of these people with the tax that we put on. I don't think it's going to be that many people, but I'd like to put a feeler out there that way. I know for our state, uh, this may be a jump up in, in level, I asked the new solicitor, uh, to look into it, uh, Washington State has done a number of things like that, uh, for veterans and people that qualify, not just, you know, just hit an age and then, then they get it, but have to have certain requirements to that. And I'd like to see something like that done, uh, to help out people that are really needing, uh, as a, a thing, just as a humanitarian type of thing. I started looking into it, I'm trying to get some of the language to help, uh, the legal wording, I know that's kind of a specialty in the law, is trying to put the right type of words to things, so that it can be, uh, dealt with on the local level as well as the county and the state level. That, that was my first thing, uh, the statement that was just made, I do wanna say, yes, I am a member of the Bottom of the High Dean Fellowship, and if, and if anybody's church has brought into public meetings and disqualified me because I'm a member of a church organization, and the way I wish to, uh, happen to have my faith, uh, I think that's crossing the line. And if that continues to take place in these meetings, I'm gonna bring action against the township for that, I will not stand for that stuff. Just because I'm a member of this place, doesn't mean I give any better preference over the township, matter of fact, I'm in the opposite of that condition, I'm not very happy with the organization myself, but I'm not letting that intervene. I wanna find the right guidelines and the right things to use in this particular situation, so they get a fair act too. We've done without a house of worship over there for thirty damn years, and I'm pretty fed up with this township and the way they've treated us. We've been here as good citizens, I've come forward, many of us have come forward for this too, and I find it's very unfair that people bring it up, you know, this is the last time I wanna hear about it in this township, thank you.
Sir? How you doing, my name's Pete Anderson, member of the Dina Far Company, Kenneth Far Company, I'm on the snow crew in Kennetboro, my thing is safety. I wanna know what you guys have in place for the disaster we just had this weekend, because most residents didn't see a plow for three days. Not that we need to get out on the streets, but as police officers and firefighters and EMS, we need to get the disgentle if something happens, we couldn't do that. I would like to know, what you have in place, are you planning on hiring more people, buying more trucks, today I saw on Facebook, you guys are looking for CDL drivers, well, it's a little late, storm's been over for three days, that should've been done a week before. I would like to know that my family is safe, but I'm not there, so what have you guys been discussing, or what do you have in place so this does not happen again?
I did, I did, well, I'll speak first, I know some of the board members have talked about, I actually got stuck in that storm myself, I made a right coming, I had to do my drive, I got out, and I went down South County, I was stuck in three feet of snow, spent four hours trying to even get back up, I was in a bad situation, went up four-by-four in a plow, and I spoke to Tag at that time, and there, there was, there was some complications as far as what I was, um, told, some of the trucks broke down, um, uh, some equipment failed going into it, um, you know, there's definitely more manpower needed, um, more volunteers needed for that snowstorm, and, um, it just was, I mean, it is one of the most severe storms that we've had, I mean, it just, I mean, I, I came from Norristown today, I was up in that region, just still cars up in that area, very.
Yeah, I'm not, not debating on them guys working hard, cause I was out for three days, I didn't see my wife for three days, so I know they worked hard, I know they busted their tails to do it, but they didn't have what they needed to do, and we're hoping that you guys are going to give them the equipment and the proper manpower for them to be able to do their jobs properly.
Yeah, and, I mean, I know that a lot of the trucks kept on getting stuck as well, because of the sheer amount of snow and how quickly it fell.
But that, that's because they were only focusing, I noticed that they were only focusing on a couple of roads, instead of hitting all the roads, I mean, even if you hit my road, I didn't see a plow for three days, even if you had hit it one time in those three days, instead of three feet, I'm now down to a foot and a half or a foot of, foot of snow that a four-wheel drive could get through.
Where do you, where do you live?
I live in Morgue L Circle. And I have a big old Dodge, and I couldn't even get home, I had to live at the firehouse for three days, cause I couldn't get to my own damn house, I'm not just saying that I needed to, but it's just us, police officers, firefighters, we need to get to you, if you're laying there having a heart attack, and if I gotta wait for a plow to come all the way from across town, or across the township to plow me in, that person's dead, that person's dead. Now, is there any price tag that you guys can put on that person's life because they don't have the proper equipment, go ahead and buy the trucks, go out there, hire guys, it's just money, it's, it's, it's really, really, it's just money, we're dead, life is more than money.
Well, I mean, last year, I mean, we, you know, we did vote to implement a one-point-two-plant type.
I hear this man speaking, I understand where you're.
No, and I, I said you guys worked your tails off, cause I know it too.
I told these board supervisors, I take the heat, cause I, I wasn't prepared for this, this, this big storm, this is one of the biggest storms, I've been doing it for twenty-five years, one of the biggest storms I've been in, and Randy will tell you, I, I used to, I took care of, uh, uh, Brandywine Hospital, we had a big storm, what year was that? We had two big loaders up there, we, and we had to ship the snow, I'm like, this is a big storm.
Dude, I work for Kennesaw Square.
The snow come out there.
I work for Kennesaw Square, I've been home, I've been out there for four days straight, so I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, what I'm saying is, they need to give you the proper equipment, and they need to give you the proper manpower, so you can do your job correctly, well.
Eric, since the snowstorm was over, we got Cliff Stolfoos in with a big V plow, and, and he did go around, I asked the board of supervisors, these board of supervisors, I'm gonna tell you, thank you guys, you know who you are, and, and they did call me, and, and I tried to get the proper equipment in, which we did, when, when you see a big V plow come through, and we did the best job we could, I understand where you're coming from, I, I'm, EMT, paramedic, whatever you wanna say, I roam with these guys all the time, they get an ambulance call, I try to go out and scrape it and get it clean, you had, uh, uh, they, one of their trucks were, were stuck the other day, we got out, we got, and, and you asked the guys who were down there, we were there within a matter of five minutes, we tried, we tried.
You're an EMT, you know five, that's a minute, you know, you know five minutes is a long time when you're sitting there with a heart attack, you know that.
That's not great, Mr. Daniels ran up the street.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I just wanted.
Mr. Daniels right up the street, what, a week ago, he passed away two weeks ago, he had to call, right here, we had two guys, I was there, and I, I was the second guy there, we went in, put him down, we tried to do CPR, then MOD ambulance finally showed up, they took over, and we couldn't bring him back, I mean.
Then you know five minutes is a long time.
I, I, I want these people to understand, these guys tried to do the best job they can, and we did too.
I was only asking what they have in place, I'm not bashing anybody. I was only asking what they have in place, I'm not bashing anybody for what happened, I'm just asking what they have in place.
I can answer that question, I can give you a, now, here's the thing, nobody, and we, you know, we did vote to implement an increase in mileage of 1.25 last year, okay, and it was pop, you know, depending on who you ask, either it was the right call or the wrong call, it's always a controversial issue. Had we increased the mileage to, you know, initially, we had proposals of three and six, six is obviously very high, if we had done a three mil, I mean, it's, yeah, we could.